Okay. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed. First, I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I'll introduce the members of the board. To my left is Lisa Armendin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, David Blatt, Patrick Callahan, Tony Castro, and Donald Gurney. Tonight, the voting members, there are four seating members, and I will have to pick one of the associates. So, Tony, you're going to vote because Hans is not here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll let them both vote.
We were just discussing that.
Oh, okay.
Just one tonight. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and you will address all comments and questions to the board. And this particular, and usually we hear a lot of, this is different in that this is a petition of a person that is aggrieved by the building inspector's determination dated May 12, 2022, with regard to a fence erected by the owners in the building inspector's order to reduce the height of two fence panels. The property which is the subject of this case is located at 72 Peninsula Drive, Lunenburg. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an appeal from a person aggrieved, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Peter Cowley, 72 Peninsula Drive in Lunenburg. The unassigned makes application as follows: Seeking relief as a person aggrieved by the decision of the building inspector to reduce the height of two fence panels. An application dated for the same dated 5/12/22 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. The proposed use or action has begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250, 6.601. The street address is 72 Peninsula Drive, South Side, Assessors Map and Parcel 29-36. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Peter R. Cowley and Nikki A. Holtzman, 72 Peninsula Drive in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 8439, Page 254, and dated 11/2/2015. And it's signed June 6, 2022 by Peter Cowley of 72 Peninsula Drive. He has put together a little summary dated June 6th. Subject: 72 Peninsula Drive Fence Appeal. Peter Cowley and Nikki Holtzman hereby appeal building department complaint regarding our fence installation of November 2021. Complaint was filed by our neighbors at 76 Peninsula Drive because fence is higher than three feet within 20 feet from street. We would like to appeal the finding based on the following: New fence replaced four arborvitae bushes which were taller than the new fence, supporting pictures on Exhibit A. Neighbor had complained several times that the arborvitae would scratch his truck and boat under snow load. The fence eliminates that concern. Fence was installed so neighbor has clear view of street while his truck is parked. In fact, his truck blocks our view of the street as we leave our driveway more than the fence does. There are numerous precedents in our neighborhood supporting pictures in Exhibit B. The fence was installed tastefully and to a standard that we thought conformed to regulations. Prior to installations, we made inquiries for approval with Hickory Hills Landowners, Lunenburg Conservation Commission, for sections from 100 feet of the lake, DigSafe Water Department, and the Building Department. We had not specifically asked about setback from street because we didn't think there would be a problem due to nearby precedents as long as fence did not block Mr. Cormier's view from his parking area. Since we made 72 Peninsula our home in 2015, we have tied back and cut our arborvitae numerous times at Mr. Cormier's request, so branches do not extend more than a few inches over his property line. We replaced the old fence because he insisted in writing that it was dangerous. We installed the fence to address our concerns as well as his. We hereby request the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeal accept our fence installation as is. Respectfully, Peter Cowley and Nikki Holtzman of 72 Peninsula Drive. There are photographs showing, do you want me to read every little thing with the pictures?
No, I don't think so.
So, there's photographs identifying the fence, and there's another whole page of pictures. This one says, "Not knowing the 20-foot regulation, we did not think there would be a problem because we regularly saw these precedents during morning-evening walks near our home." And there are several examples on two pages. There is a copy of the field card from the Board of Assessors' Office, a copy of the building inspector's letter dated May 12th. And this is to Peter Cowley, Trust, 72 Peninsula Drive. To whom it may concern, this office has written, has a written complaint regarding a recently installed fence at your residence. The nature of the complaint was that the fence was too high, too close to his property, and too high near the public roadway. A site visit was performed as well as a thorough investigation. Submitted documents were reviewed from both parties. After doing my research and looking at all the evidence, it has been determined that the fence in question is not in violation of closeness in proximity to another dwelling or in total height due to its pre-existing nature and age. It has been determined, though, that the fence, the section of the fence within 20 horizontal feet of the public street was not previously existing and therefore must be reduced in height to 36 inches to meet the language of the zoning bylaw, specifically Section 250, 6.601, which requires fence within 20 feet of the street line must be reduced to 36 inches or less in height. To avoid future enforcement orders and potential fines, please reduce the height of the fence within 20 feet of the street line to meet the language of the zoning bylaw. Sincerely, K.C. Burlingame, Lunenburg Building Commissioner." And there's a copy of the assessors' map, a list of abuddies which were all notified by mail prior, two weeks prior to this hearing. And then, the applicant has put together a little rendering of where the fence and arborvitae were located. And that's all, Mr. Chairman. This paperwork is not the same paperwork. If you want me to read what was submitted by Mr., this is the other one. This is what I read.
Okay. This is the same thing here.
Yes, I already read that.
All right. So, which one's the other?
I didn't know if you wanted me to read what the other person submitted.
Yeah.
I don't have it. You have it.
I have it. Is it in here?
No.
I don't have it.
Okay, well, he's here, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll let him, we'll let the other.
We had received submitted documentation from Mr. Cormier, but we're going to let him.
Address him.
Address the issue.
So, at this time, we're going to invite the applicant up to the mic and give your name and address and say whatever you would like to say.
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm Peter Cowley, 72 Peninsula Drive. Just wanted to make a couple of points that are not in the application appeal. First of all, the, there's no question whatsoever that the fence is on our property. Dillis and Roy surveyed the property last year, and the fences, I guess, my guess is anywhere from three to six inches or maybe more from the property line.
How many feet did you say?
Sorry?
How many feet did you say?
Three to six inches, at least from the property line. The fence borders a parking space that my neighbor uses for his work truck as well as for boat storage. It's well separated from their main driveway, which is what's used for their normal vehicles, including the three-car garage. As the appeal stated, I'll try to be brief here, it replaces four arborvitae that had been there. And I guess, to, you know, to his credit certainly, our neighbor is meticulous about his yard. That extends to, one aspect of that is it extends to, you know, branches from our bushes extending over the property line by more than a few inches. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, we'd returned home a couple of times to find him trimming the bushes with hedge trimmers. Nikki here, who is an avid gardener, you know, has told me many times that you're not supposed to do that. You know, I've been guilty of trimming things improperly as well. But you're not supposed to do that with arborvitae. You're supposed to cut branches or tie them back. So, you know, for the last five years or so, we have been, you know, just cutting branches and tying the bushes back so that they wouldn't extend over the line. As far as the fence section in question here, you know, we actually had two of the bushes tied back with a stake so that they wouldn't bend over because he claimed that the bushes could bend over and scratch his work truck or his boat. But, you know, he was still complaining about that. So, in early last year, I told him, well, we'll just put a fence in place along with the other fence that we were installing to replace another section of fence that was in disrepair. So, anyway, he seemed okay with that. You know, before the overall installation, we did check with Conservation, Hickory Hills, DigSafe, Water District. When we checked with the Building Department, it just never occurred to me that, to inquire if there was a height limitation close to the street, I had never heard of it, and plus there were many precedents in our area. When we go out for our morning walks, we see quite a few that are, you know, clearly over three feet and close to the street. So, I just, you know, that is my fault. I never thought to ask that question. But the, you know, we tried to use common sense. I cut back one of the sections so it wouldn't extend quite as far to the street. I sloped the far section close to the street so that my neighbor, in fact, would be able to see as he drove out of his parking area. You know, those last couple of sections in question are frankly, you know, kind of a, you know, expensive proposition because the Lakeview Landscaping valued the arborvitae we took out at $400 to $500. So, you know, that with the fence, you know, we're probably into just this one section at over $1,000. So, you know, we tried to do it tastefully. We put the good side to him, of course, as you would anybody. You know, we just felt it was well done. You know, we weren't trying to offend anybody, but he doesn't seem to be happy with a whole lot of things we do, so he filed his complaint. So, you know, just based on the above, you know, we just request your understanding, and I don't think we're doing our neighbor any harm, or anyone for that matter, and request that you accept it as is. If there are any questions, should I stay here for questions or?
Yeah. Okay, so, just a few questions from me, and then I'll open it to the board. So, the fence that you currently put up, that's in question, that was a replacement fence for a pre-existing fence that was changed because of its age and deteriorating condition?
There was an overall installation to replace a fence that had been there, had been there for a long, long time. The previous owners of our house moved in in 2003 and said the fence was there when they moved in. They hadn't made any changes. It wasn't disrepair. And our neighbor actually gave us what amounted to a written order to remove the fence because they felt it was a danger because of a few nails poking through. So, we replaced that overall section. The sections that were in question for this appeal close to the street replaces the arborvitae that had been there.
I was going to ask you that. So, the first part of the fence near the street, there's three sections, and then there's a telephone pole, and there's a couple more sections, then there's arborvitae, then I think there's five sections towards the lake. Is that correct?
Towards the lake, yes.
Okay. So, the first 20 feet that the building inspector or commissioner is referring to, there was no fence. Is that correct?
It was not there, correct.
Okay.
Because it's replacing the arborvitae that actually were higher than what had been there. You know, plus, you know, we thought we were addressing our neighbor's complaints that it could scratches, they could bend over and scratch his truck.
Okay. All right. With that, I will open it up to the board if they have questions for you.
So, the only thing really in question is the first section of fence from the road to where their shed is. Is that correct?
Well, there are three sections, I'm getting into semantics, sorry, but there are three, three fence sections between a phone pole, which is essentially the border, and the road. And the first two are the ones in question closer to the road.
Well, there are three sections on the fence from the road. You go in from the road to the telephone pole, there's a dead space.
Yeah.
And then the fence starts, and it rises up, and then it goes to about a six-foot fence for two sections. One that is about eight feet wide, and one that's about six feet, or five to six feet wide. And then the front one is the one that slopes up. That is the one that's in question.
Yes, sir.
Completely.
Yes.
And nothing else that goes beyond. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, my question is the other side is that I was trying to find in the bylaws, and I remember reading it somewhere, but the width of a street, how we mention, how this town measures the street line? Because, right, because that's the question. And my question is mainly going to be, because of that neighborhood and the way this town does paving, is the street wider than it, what it's designated for that area? And where does the 20 feet start is going to be?
No, it would be at the road's edge because that originally was a private road that was accepted by the town. The town asked them to bring it up to certain dimensions, and that's what that road is today.
Okay, okay, that was my first one. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Okay. And my next question is for you is, when you brought, when you discussed this with the building inspector, did you bring a set of plans, or did you have anything made by the landscapers that were describing the fence when you approached the building inspector with your questions?
No, I did not. It was a phone call, honestly.
Okay, all right. So, did you explain to them at all what kind of fence you were trying to put up or anything to that effect?
Yes, I, there was a straight, I described it as a six-foot stockade.
Okay. And they didn't mention to you that, you know, about the 20 feet or anything to that effect?
Well, at that point, that, see, that was verbal. I'm trying to remember the exact conversation. I honestly can't tell you if I mentioned that I was going to replace the arborvitae with a fence or not.
Okay, so, you could have approached him basically saying you're looking to replace a fence with a six-foot.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. And the arborvitae themselves, how far were they from the property line? Are they like roughly where the fence was, is?
They were actually set in a little bit. They're, I'd say the bases of them are maybe a couple of feet from the property line, you know, but they do spread out.
Understand. Yeah, understand. And, you know, I was kind of surprised, yeah, I was kind, I'm kind of surprised that the Conservation Committee was going to say yes to removing our arborvitae, but okay.
Well, that's not near the lake at all.
That's not.
That's totally out of their jurisdiction.
Much further up.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to ask a couple of questions for clarification because when I looked at that, I looked at that from the street and from the lake. And we're talking, you're saying it's three to five feet. And I'm just curious because there is a retaining wall on the other property, 76, which maybe your neighbor's going to address.
I'm sorry?
That certainly doesn't appear to be three to, three to five feet from where the fence is. Am I right or wrong? And when I say a retaining wall, it's actually if the property, 76, is higher than your property.
Yes.
And they built, not recently, but a long time ago probably, a retaining wall. Correct?
Right, the retaining wall was installed, I would say about five years ago.
Five years ago. Okay, so that retaining wall is the neighbor's retaining wall?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to address that with them when they come up. Okay. See what else I'm going to ask. All right, no, that's all I have for you. Any other questions from the board?
So, just to clarify, it's the first two sections towards the street that are in question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, anything else?
It's a dead-end street.
You have to come up to the mic if you're going to. Give your name and address, please.
Sure. 72 Peninsula Drive, Nikki Holtzman. So, it's a dead-end street, so the fence is not impairing or impeding anybody's view to be able to pull out of our prospective driveways. We're halfway down on the road, and the arborvitae that we personally took out were viable, and we used a tractor and had to pull them out ourselves because of all the complaining that had been going on about our arborvitae and the apple tree hanging over his property. So, we did that. We told him we were going to put a fence up, and he was in agreement, a verbal agreement with that. He said that would be a good thing. So, we went ahead and did it. It was during all of the supply chain issues, so it took us many months to be able to find a nice fence instead of just, you know, putting a vinyl fence up. We really tried to make it do justice to all of the properties in the area there. The arborvitae were approximate, they were closer to the street than the end of the fence is now. As you can see in the picture, it very clearly would have blocked everybody's view on his side. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, I will open it up to the public, which is also the neighbor's.
It's, sir, Wayne and Ruth Cormier, 76 Peninsula Drive. Do you have a question for me? You want me to go on?
No, no, you can present anything you want, anything you want to say to the board, or any questions you have, anything you want to address.
Okay. Ruth and I have lived at 76 Peninsula Drive, adjacent to the lot, bordering the new fence at 72. We are opposed to the appeal petition and the entire fence installation for numerous reasons. The new fence was not constructed in accordance with Code of Lunenburg, Section 250, 660. K.C. issued two different enforcement orders. The first one was issued February 8th, 2022, and stated the fence was well over six feet in height and requires fences within 12 horizontal feet of habitable rooms in abutting dwellings and 20 feet from the street line must be reduced to 36 inches. For some reason, this first determination was changed on May 12th to only address the two fence panels on the street. The homeowner did not appeal the original February 8th zoning official determination letter within the required 30 days' time, Chapter 48, Section 13. And the February 8th zoning official determination letter within the required 30 days, okay, nor did they respond to the second revised determination letter within the 30 days required. And we're wondering why this second determination changed. MGL 48, Section 7, notify, says to notify the party requesting such enforcement of any action or refusal to act, and the reason therefore within 14 days of such action. So, we're thinking that the original February issued, February 8th zoning determin, official determination was, is the one we're acting on. We didn't know of any second one until we got this package. We were never notified, so that's, we're addressing the entire fence. The fence is much higher than the old fence and blocks our views on both ends, from the lake, three-season room, and blocks a view from the paved parking area adjacent to the street. The five-panel new section fence on the lakeside has six fence posts that vary from 77 inches to 82 inches as measured from the ground. The old fence had a much lower panel, closest to the water, it was about three and a half feet high, the post was. We believe the fence was not tastefully done and is actually offensive. During the construction of the new fence, new fence posts were dug and encroached closer and almost on the property line. It, one pole was actually over the property line, and we had to ask that it be moved. I got called home in the middle of the day, lunchtime. At that time, Peter was actually sent a note letting him know of Section 21, which I have copies, if anybody needs copies, Section 21. And we asked it to be moved. The contractor did not use any means of verifying property line. There were no markings. It was just basically point and dig. Okay, the board members, which are you people, received our email that had attached a package addressed to K.C. Purpose of the letter was to address the entire fence, and we never got a response to that We actually have another packet with some photos that we'd like to pass out to the members.
Hmm.
If we could do that. So, you can follow along. Excuse me?
Are those the ones you emailed?
No, these, this is a different packet.
It's a different one.
Little bit, little bit different pictures.
Well, we'll.
If you want to submit them?
If you want to submit them, please do.
Ruth's got the packets. You know, we love living on Hickory Hills. I just want to say that, you know, I've, since I've been there, it's been more about building bridges than walls. building bridges than, than walls. Or it, it just, uh, there's been a big miscommunication between my neighbor and myself and, um, as far as the arborvities go, that, that seems to be the real sore subject. And this is...
This would be an example of a light snowfall in New England, which you can clearly see if anybody that knows arborvities, uh, they've been...
And so, the, the arborvities, so the fence in entirety at its highest peak is twenty feet because the state of Massachusetts recognizes bushes, rocks, uh, structures that are built as a bordering fence. And I mean, it was addressed with my neighbors. I do trim my side, my property, as I believe I have a right to. And I, when I fir- when they first moved in, I actually went over and told them that I'd be doing that. And I, I thought that was the neighborly thing to do. And it's very sad that we're here because I've helped them, I helped them move in. I've helped them numerous times over the years and, uh, it's just a very sad thing in the town of Lunenburg right now. What's that?
This is that new packet I just gave you. Do you wanna go through it and explain?
The, uh, the new packet actually has the actual letter that we gave Peter and Nikki as a result of a miscommunication on the street. We thought, uh, writing or communicating in written form would be a better way to go, which there hasn't been any of that kind of commu- communication until right now.
We didn't have a, a lot of time, this is all brand new. So, of course, we didn't have much time, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to address some of these things right here and right now. So, while the rest of the board is, is looking at it, I'm just gonna briefly look at it and then address a few things. Number one, the only, the only regulations on the fencing in zoning is section two fifty-six-point-six, uh, zero, uh, which is, I'm sure you know, only states about the twenty feet from the road and the twenty feet, uh, twelve feet horizontal from a, a room, uh...
And it is...
That's, that's, that's the only thing in zoning that pertains to fence. There's no other section.
The fence, the fence towards the lakeside is actually ten feet from an occupied room. And it is well over six feet high.
One of the things, I can tell you this, um, because Hickory Hills originally was all camps. They're all, I'm gonna tell you right now, there are a lot of what would be considered violations currently, um, at, in Hickory Hills. I know your property, I know it's a beautiful piece of property. They have a beautiful home that with a beautiful view of the lake. Their property is the same. Both of you keep it up immaculate. Um, I, I know that from both sides. Like I say, there's a lot of violations. I can walk down Peninsula Drive and point out, including on other properties violations that would be considered violations today. But again, Hickory Hills was originally small lots with, you know, some people were fortunate, bought double lots, but most people bought one lot. So, they're small, most of them are all non-conforming, pre-existing, um, lots. And so, there's a, it's a little bit different when you get onto the lakes and different things. I'm also a little bit confused about where the actual boundary line is because that retaining wall was split up by yourself, correct?
Correct.
Five years ago. And you put that up, was that done by an actual, um, survey or just a tape survey?
It was done by a survey. It's six inches from the property line.
You have an actual property line, boundary. And how far is that?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, they had a survey done to verify the property line boundary also.
So, I'm just confused because it doesn't make a lot of sense. So, how far from the property line is that, that retaining wall?
Six inches.
Six inches.
The last post on the fence that was installed from the street, the one that's behind the telephone pole, is actually encroaching on our property.
So, you're saying the telephone pole is in...
I don't, I don't have an issue for that, with that.
No, I'm asking, you're saying the telephone pole is on your property?
No, the telephone pole is almost split in the middle.
Square in the middle. And you're saying your retaining wall is how far from the property line?
Six inches.
Six inches?
Correct.
So, you're, you're pretty much on the property line with the retaining wall, correct? And how far from that line of, is the fence to your neighbors yet?
Depends on where you talk on the fence, the fence, because it was just a, you know, there wasn't any markings, there wasn't any strings.
Right. So, I, I'm just trying to get a better picture of where things really are because, you know, both sides have given a little different version of it. So, I'm trying to just, in my mind, calculate.
Yep, no, understood. Um, the arborvities that were removed were actually on the property and there's a property corner marker. The actual fence that's on the street side is six feet beyond that corner marker off the property. It's almost the full section that tapers down.
Okay.
So, that's on town property, including the boulder.
Okay, I'm gonna just, let me just look quick. I wanna try and answer some of your questions.
Yep, okay, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm trying to do. Okay, um, one of the, one of the other questions I saw is the height of the fence. Um, you're saying it's over six feet?
The height of the fence is well over six feet.
And basically...
Height of which fence? The one towards the lake or the one on the front?
The one on the lakeside. Well, the one on the front is a little over six feet, that's...
But we're only addressing the one on the front.
Well, according to the original, um, order...
Is, is the fence, just a follow-up, please. Is the fence, the same fence all the way?
It, it was...
Does the height change?
It was...
Not, not the front part, but that, does the height of the fence go from six to a different height or are they all the same panels?
There's slightly different height. I think, I think it was seventy...
The difference in the height, I'm looking at this picture, actually. Sorry. I'm just looking at this picture.
Yep.
And I'm just saying that it's actually one thing in the town, and I know this because fences, because of contour of land and different things, things go up and down. As long as a, no fence is gonna be directly on the ground. So, they consider that fence to be a six-foot, if that's what the panels are and it's not, I mean, you can't put it a foot above, but if it's somewhat reasonably three inches from the ground, somewhere in four inches, even maybe depending on the contour of the earth, they, they do not count that as...
But according to two fifty...
They don't put a tape measure from the ground because it would change, just as you show it changes with the contour of the land.
Right, but according to two fifty-six-six-zero...
What's that?
According to two fifty-six-six-zero, it states that anything within twelve feet, which that's within ten feet of an occupied room, has to be thirty-six inches.
Which, which is, another question I was gonna ask is, you know, what came first? That old fence or the remodeling of the houses?
Even if the old fence came first, it never was qualified, uh, as being pre-existing non-conforming, uh, because it's not existing now and every bit of it was removed, including the footings and the, and the base. So, there was nothing to judge by. I could say it was five feet, but I, I know it was over five feet. I know it was under six feet. And, uh, according to pre-existing non-conforming, you cannot go over and beyond the original dimensions, from my understanding.
Well, that's not, that's, today, I mean, you can't, something that was built, say, thirty years ago, you can't replace it with the exact whatever it was because they probably don't make it anymore. So, things, you know, things, a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure or whatever is, is basically, I'm not gonna say today's standard, some, a reasonable reflection of what was there. It doesn't have to be exact.
So, a foot higher than it was?
It does have to comply, but it's, it's, um, like I say, there's lots and lots of cases down at Hickory Hills of pre-existing non-conforming, believe me. I could point out one on your, on your property, but I won't. But anyway, any other questions from the board now that you've had time to look at this packet?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address a little bit your question about the retaining wall. How far from, how far were the arborvities from the edge of your retaining wall?
They're over the retaining wall.
What's that?
They are over the retaining wall.
So, the root, so the tree is actually planted on your side?
Oh, no, no, the roots, the roots are on my neighbor's side.
Right, so the, so the trunk of the tree is on the neighbor's side. How far from your retaining wall are those arborvities?
The, the branches?
No, the trunk. I, I, I can't go by the branches. Legally, you're allowed to chop down every branch that goes over your property.
They're probably about a foot and a half, maybe, or something like that. Maybe, I mean, they were, they were planted when they were small, I'm sure. And, and when I was maintaining them, I could reach them. I, you know, at my age, I'm no longer able to, uh, maintain them and I'm, I'm more than happy to give them the responsibility of maintaining them. But I have a, a path that my fuel delivery guy uses to go through there, which the offset is five feet where my, my fuel tank is, and there's a twenty-foot arborvitie right there that they bend like bananas during the winter, during the snow load.
So, you're, so you're, which, I, I, let me understand this correctly. You're saying that those arborvities project five feet over your retaining wall? Is that what you're telling me?
They, sometimes they, they are, well, I mean, show you that picture again.
If I'm looking at these, when I went to look at these arborvities, they looked like they were fairly tight, which those arborvities, I know they go through snow loads, but they don't go that far. So, and the other side, my other question's gonna be is, is really, do you have something to show on your, that, that you had a survey to, done, to show that the fence is indeed where you say it is? In other words, is the fence, you know, you're looking at here and is the fence, um, how, how far did you, when you had a survey done, how far is that fence off your property line? And how far, you mentioned the retaining wall. So, if I look at the retaining wall, when I went there and I looked at the retaining wall and I'm looking at some of the materials you have on your side of the fence, I would see that your, those, those materials now are on, not on your property anymore. They're on su- on their property based on what you're telling me about the retaining wall as well. So, I'm, I'm having a little trouble here, sir, because what I'm seeing is, is that you measured the height of the fence on your side and the zoning laws, the bylaws basically talks about six feet on their side because any property that's sloped could have the other section of the, to be as, as steep as it wants to be. So, where do you measure the fence? The fence is measured by the people who are installing the fence, not the people who are looking at the fence.
Well, after the fence was installed, it was backfilled and, I mean, that whole bottom...
I'm looking at their side, I don't really see, I didn't see the backfill on their side. I saw it looked like it was plain vegetation on their, on their side. I mean, you're gonna, when you ha- when you're digging holes, you're gonna disturb the earth somewhat as you do this. So, I don't, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding the six-foot, the complaint for over six feet. I, to me, the only thing we should be addressing here are the sections that you're in question that are within twenty feet of the road. And I'm asking if that's what you want us to address or do you want us to start addressing everything else on the property?
I was addressing the entire fence. That's what I was addressing. And as far as feet...
If you wanna look a little closer at this picture here, you can see the arborvities.
Okay, so if...
There's a light snow load, um, they bend quite a, quite a ways over.
I, and I can see based on the boat and based on the house that that was, you know, that's quite a bit of snow that was on, on, on the area.
Three or four inches.
After, and it looks like then it must've melted off the, uh, off the arborvities too, or frozen up.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, you know, I'm...
And to me, it's, I'm, I'm having a little trouble because I understand that you've been there for a while. I understand that these folks, when they had new folks move in, you, you, you know, I, these arborvities weren't planted by them, they were planted on pe- by people before them. It happened to be when they came in that the discussion with the arborvities became quite, I don't know what your discussion is with the previous owner with those arborvities, um, whether they, whether you've been, if you've been trimming them back, I don't see that the arborvities would have been that vital and things of that sort. Um, so, I'm having a little trouble here to understand the section of the fence other than those twenty feet from the road. And I'm asking you nicely if I, if it's, that's the section you want us to concentrate on or do you want us to try to concentrate on everything that's there? Do you want us to concentrate on...
I get you, I get your point.
Building inspector, with the building commissioner?
You, you made your point. I'm, I'm here to cooperate with the board.
Okay.
You guys are steering the boat. I'd like to be out on the boat right now.
No, no, may not be ready.
Um, okay. Please, indeed, I wanna address one thing with that.
Did the applicant file?
Yeah, so he's saying that he filed after the thirty day.
I would have to look back because they were gonna be away and I was gonna be away and so there was some scheduling issues that prevented half of the hearing.
I would have one more...
Not the hearing, not the hearing, not the hearing. All he had to do was file that he was agreed because if you postponed it, he's not obligated to that.
Did they contact you?
Could they contact you, in other words?
The applicant, when he got the letter, he contacted Casey immediately.
Okay, so he did contact you when he got the letter?
Yes.
I have one more request.
Yes.
I read something about the town having a mediator. I just, uh, as far as communicating with my neighbor, I would like things to improve and I'm wondering if we could take advantage of something like that.
To be honest with you, I don't know what their rules are with the mediator.
If, if there is one, I don't know.
I'll be honest, I, I wish you would too because I'll tell you, you both live in beautiful homes, you both live in a, on a peaceful, beautiful lake.
I agree, I...
And, and, uh, I've actually lived on that lake over the years, actually overfought. So, that's why I know that area and I know that lake very well. So, it's just a, it would be nice if you guys could reach in an agreement, but we still have to hear, look at what's in front of us, what the building inspector determined and what is in front of us is the fact that a person aggrieved by the building inspector's decision is what's before us. And that's what we have to, to work with. And I, and I will tell you that after, you know, we have a maiden need to say, I have no idea where this board goes till they actually vote. But you, there is an appeal period. We have fourteen days once we write the decision, which I'll read at the end. After we write a decision and you can appeal it, but your appeal from this board is to the Superior Court. But, I mean, as far as the mediator, I think it would be a great idea for you to...
And there is a, the driveway that we're talking about that is being blocked as far as, if you pull your car in there headfirst, okay, I marked my van there, but it is a driveway. My nieces, nephews, I mean, sisters, everybody parks in it when my van is not there. And you're more than welcome during the day when I'm at work to pull in that driveway and try to pull out safety. There's a long straightaway there and people fly down that straightaway.
I, I don't disagree with that statement. Okay, um, see if there's any other question. I guess, I, I, I'm trying to address these as well. any other question. I guess, I, I'm trying to address these as well. I'm, I'm trying to do it on the fly here. And I'm, because I do want to be fair here.
Yeah, and if you have any more questions for me, I mean, I, I've done way too much reading, um, over the past few weeks. Uh, you know, this isn't my typical job, but I kind of made it a job, and so did my wife. It's, it's, uh, all in all, it would be nice to settle things in many ways.
Okay, that would be great. But we still have to make a decision because it's before us.
Is that a tonight decision, or, I mean?
We will make it tonight. We'll, you will, we'll argue it out right here.
Oh, okay.
We, we do it, right, we like to have everything done in the public with everybody here. Um, so absolutely, we will make a decision tonight. Okay.
Well, thank you for hearing me, and thank you for being open and honest with me.
Can I ask him?
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Can you answer a question relative, what are you actually asking for relative to the situation? Because I'm still confused. The situation that we're initially hearing is only about the front section of the fence.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I can address that. I mean-
Yeah, I got, yeah.
I'm gonna address it this way. Um, this is an appeal from somebody that's agreed by the building commissioner's decision, which is what's in front of us. I would just assume, I wanted to hear the entire fence.
I understand.
Because I want them to have their input. I want them to have their say in, in, you know, as they say, put all the cards out on the table. Um, the arborvitae, I mean, that's, that is actually really more of a, a civil thing, you know, that doesn't involve zoning. We don't have zoning for, although, you know, if they encroach on it or something, they're out of release, but not through us.
And that's a moot question because they're no longer there. So we're only concerned-
I'm just saying the rest of it.
Yeah, but we're concerned with the fence in the front, which is what the zoning board official, uh, Casey-
Right.
-ruled that should be reduced.
Yes, yes.
But there's no mention in here of anything in the front that he brought up-
What he's saying.
Um, about obstructed view, and pictures show obstructed view.
Right.
And what are you asking for? What are you looking to have as an easement, so to speak, to help alleviate your situation and not hurt their situation?
A fairly logical, to me, move would be to take the panel that's angled and move it back to the next section. That may not give you your twenty feet, but it gives you enough to back a car out and actually see the oncoming traffic.
That's in the front?
Correct.
That's all I'm gonna address.
What about the back?
Yeah, I'm only gonna address-
We're, we're-
The reason we're only addressing-
We have a beautiful view, is what I was told. And I understand that.
Yeah, on, on the other side, um, if, if you, I'll, I'll speak to that as well. Um, those, that fence on the lakeside has got to be, I don't know how many, thirty feet back, am I guessing?
From the lake?
From the lake.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, I just got that. You probably saw me-
Yeah, and it's, there's, there's no windows on that side of my neighbor's house?
I was gonna say, there's also a fence on the, if I'm on the street, the left-hand side of the property, which is, ends about the same distance.
It's under six feet, and it's not obstructing anybody's view.
Okay, all right. But I just wanted to say that, you know, um, on that, on that side, you're saying that Pete, that section of fence, are you're talking, measured from the ground or the panel?
The, the, one on the opposite side?
The one on the opposite side.
It's from the ground up. It's less than six feet.
That's what I thought.
It was built to a different code.
Okay, but it's, it's the same panel as all the rest of the panels, though, correct?
Yes.
And probably very close to the same panel you have on the left-hand side.
I, I'm not sure which, when you're facing the house?
When I'm facing your house, there's, there's two fences. The fence that's in question between you and seventy-two.
Yes.
And then on the other side of your house, the left-hand side, there is another fence.
Correct, and that, that-
And that fence appears to be the same type of panel.
It, it's a picket, but it is under six feet, opposed to the one on the opposite side.
Okay, all right. Um, what, what I'm gonna say, because we, what's in front of us by the building inspector, and what's they've addressed is agreed by, what they want is they want to be able to keep, keep it as is. Their, their, their question to us is, I think the building inspector made the wrong decision in that, because there's other fences that are, you know, like that in the neighborhood, that we should be able to keep our fence the way it is. And the building inspector said, no, because within twenty feet, the first two sections have to be below, below three feet, or three feet, because that's what the zoning says they have to be. So that's really what's before us. And so we either, what we're either gonna do is we're gonna say, yes, I agree with the building inspector, you have to change that. We also have the option of saying, no, the building inspector was wrong. Um, but, um, then, to his point, he says if he pulls into it-
This might be a good reference.
What's that, please?
This is the view coming down the road, where you can see the fences on the right are offset from the street, including fences on-
On Peninsula.
Seventy-two. And then you can see the road narrows just before my house or the whole room.
Right, okay. Yeah, like I say, I think we're, no, I know exactly what you're talking about. So those are our decisions. That's what we can make. That's what we're gonna base it on. That's what we're gonna, gonna address. So if there's no more questions for either one, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna say to his point that he is correct when you, the fence slopes down on the section towards the road. Uh, I've seen his truck there. I actually walk Peninsula Drive every day myself. Um, you can see his window, he can see out, to drive out, if he happens to be back facing the road. He is correct. If he drives in the other way, that he would be, his view would be blocked back and go. So I'll make that point, that he is correct on that, in my opinion. Your opinions can be whatever they want. But anyway, so now I'll-
You done with me?
We're, we're done with you? Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time.
This is why you have comments, too?
I don't know. All right, so with that, I'm gonna do it. Do you have anything else? If you, it's still open to the public, but so you can still-
Hello, I'm Ruth Cormier, Wayne's wife, live at seventy-six Peninsula. And I, I just have one, oh, louder, okay. Um, I still have one question in my mind on why Casey's determination was changed.
Could you speak about, I can't hear you.
I, I still have one remaining question in my mind on why Casey's determination was changed to not include or not address the whole fence? Um, 'cause based on, you know, that two fifty six point six, um, it is over the six feet. And to try to help move things along, we're okay with those, the panels near the lake, there's five of them. In the packet that we just gave you, you can see that the front two panels closest to the lake do obstruct our view from inside our three-season room. Um, the old fence, you couldn't even see it from that room. So we would like if those two panels could be made to conform to what was there, because it's not a replacing kind fence, it's different. Before, the fence went from the lake to the street. Now it's five panels, trees, and then a few panels in the front, which is fine, but we've lived there for twelve years. And because, you know, we wanted to live on a lake and enjoy the views, and it is being obstructed from that room, so we would like to see if you could maybe address that for us also.
Now, when you say the panels on that are over six, you're talking from the ground?
Yes.
Right. See, but the problem is, like I say, unless, unless those panels are like a foot off the ground?
They're about, they're-
Nine inches off the ground.
They could be three or four inches off the ground, 'cause they, they could be three or four inches off the ground. In the pictures, you can see it. There's a, a gray brick laying underneath it. So it is raised off the ground.
Okay, um, then I will, I will ask the seventy-two to come back up and just address that, if those-
Um, in that packet I just gave you, there's a picture of the situation. Um, and, and it also has a picture of the old fence that was, the last panel was half the height. So.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
Are you saying your sunroom is within twelve feet?
Yes.
So do you have anything that shows that it's within twelve feet?
I do have a picture on my phone of tape measure that we laid down.
My issue with that is, is what came first, the chicken or the egg?
No, I understand. If there was a pretty-
The remodeling or the fence?
Right.
And I know that that-
No, there was always a three-season room there.
What's that?
There was always a, a three-season room in that area.
So you're saying when the house was built, it had a three-season room?
No.
No, no, no. I, I actually have a, an assessment.
Right, but-
When we moved-
I don't know when the fence was built. I don't know when the additions were, but both houses have had additions.
Exactly. No, I understand.
Well, when we bought the house in two thousand and ten, and this back three-season room was the screen room, but it was still considered a three-season room as on our, the thing from the town we have. And the wind blew the roof off it, so we were going to replace it, so we made a more sturdier structure so it wouldn't happen again. But it's on the same foundation. It's not bigger. It's taller, but it's not, you know, bigger in square feet.
Um, I did ask Mr. Berlin again how he came to that conclusion. He said that he did look at the evidence and that he did conclude that, same thing, he didn't know when things were remodeled. He didn't know when the fence was built. He didn't know when those rooms were done. Um, so he, he said that he, according to all the evidence he looked at, that that was not a violation. At the time, the original fence was erected.
But if the origin, I, I don't know when the original fence was constructed either, but the fact that the old fence was taken down, including the posts, so now we have a new fence, which to me should conform to the new laws, new regulations.
Again, I'll say that, you know, again, it's, it was non-conforming lots, non-conforming structures all over down there.
Yep.
If you made everybody conform, you can't even, the bylaws says you can't make people go, come up to the new standards. They couldn't build it, yet you couldn't do anything.
Right. Well, I'm not asking to bring up to the new standards. Because it's a new fence, I would think it should conform to the town's regulations. Otherwise, why have the regulations? I mean, but, but we are willing to, you know, compromise and negotiate if they, if-
Hopefully, hopefully, I mean, no matter what the board decides, I hope you're still gonna negotiate and compromise and do something that's reasonable. And, but, you know, that's, that's strictly up to, to you and your neighbors.
So would we have to put in an appeal or something for this?
Um, from our decision, the only appeal is to the Superior Court. You have, you, there is a fourteen days to write a decision. Once the decision is filed, uh, you have twenty days to file with the Superior Court.
What, what Superior Court? I've, I've never done this before. I don't even know who comes to that.
If it comes to that, she can-
No, Superior Court.
Like in Boston or something?
Yes.
Okay, twenty days, okay.
From the date the decision is signed and-
And stand.
To the town clerk. So it could be fourteen days, it could be two days.
And so we'll get a copy of, so, so that's the decision that would be made tonight, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Um, one of the comments that Peter has said was, was that they didn't submit any plans for review. So I, how could something be approved if there weren't any plans? How did they know what was gonna be done?
Um, if fences are six feet or under, it doesn't require a permit?
No, no, I, I didn't say a permit. I think it's under seven feet, but I, the plans that he said he submitted to conservation and others for this new fence.
You mentioned he talked to the different agencies. He just, in fact, he said he had a phone conversation with the building commissioner.
And so did that say that they were gonna replace the same, the fence? I know it's gonna be different material, but the same configuration, the same heist and everything?
As, as mentioned, it's the, it was, if he had this discussion with the building commissioner, you'll have to talk to the building commissioner to find out what that discussion was about. We, we only, we can't, we can't go by that. The building commissioner has mentioned to you that, has mentioned that he didn't feel that the fence, only, only the front of the fence, the first twenty, the first two sections were in violation of the Lunenburg bylaws. So you can appeal his decision if you, I, I assume.
Um, and, and one other comment that Peter has made was, he said that he explained that that was going to be a six-foot stockade fence. The panels that were actually delivered were eight feet initially.
But are those panels that are up, are the panels that are up eight feet?
No, um, we saw that they were delivered and was, was tall. I'm retired, so I was home, so I watched the whole thing. And I did speak with Peter. He came out, and I mentioned the six feet, so we actually had the contractor cut them down.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, if it's eight feet, yeah, they were in violation.
Right, so we helped them there and, you know, having to-
Right.
-shorten the whole thing. So, you know, we tried to work with them, but, um, I guess that's all, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, if you would like to just address the panels towards the lake that they're saying are more than six feet, that you, that they're unreasonably high off the ground?
Oh.
Please, yes, please come up to-
For the folks at home, listening, watching.
I just wanted to briefly address a couple of points that had been brought up. Um, first of all, um, I did respond to the complaints within thirty days. I, I, I came to talk to the building inspector and, um, and due to, uh, vacations, traveling, medical leave, et cetera, um, you know, things just got put off. So, you know, we weren't trying to delay anything. Um, the, uh, our installation was done according to a survey by Dillison Roy. Uh, the surveyor did, uh, comment- Uh, the surveyor did, uh, commented to me that, I know there was some questions that came up regarding the retaining wall. He was unable to place a stake, um, because of the retaining wall. He placed two stakes, one at the far end on the lakeside and one near the street. I do have a picture, and, and I guess the question of whether the, the fence was over the property line or not, uh, what I heard was that came up. I just have a picture on the, uh, on, on my phone of the surveying stake relative to the fence. If anyone, uh, wants to see that. I don't have a written version.
Is that towards the front or is that towards the back?
This is in the front. Yes.
What does it show?
So it's that corner, the corner stake that he, that the other gentleman mentioned?
Dillis and Roy actually, um, explained to me that the, the wooden stake, well, I don't know how much you can see here, but there's a fence on this side. Here's, here's the fence.
Yeah.
There's the stake. But Dillis and Roy actually explained to me that there's a steel stake that is placed a couple of inches farther away from the fence. So that's, that's the actual property line.
Okay.
And that frankly shows that the entire fall fall is on my property. I, I've never seen anything involved that, but-
Anyway.
I don't think the property line is in question at this point.
Right, right. I, I don't believe it is either. Um, there was a, a point made about, um, a, a danger backing out of the parking area. It is a, a dead-end street. Um, we always back out of our own driveway as well. Um, in the seven years that we have lived there, um, I've seen a vehicle other than the work truck that's always backed in. Um, I've seen a vehicle other than that work truck a, a handful of times. So I, I dispute that it, it's a danger backing out of there. Okay, that's, that's my only point.
And just the back section. How high off the ground is that, that back section?
Well, in my original, in my original, uh, response to, uh, Mr. Burlingame, um, I, I did show pictures of, um, of that, because that was one of the complaints, that it was, uh, in fact, Mr. Burlingame was told it was, uh, about seven feet high. The, the five sections, uh, the first one is seventy-two, second one is seventy-three and a half, the next one is seventy-five, next one is seventy-four and a half, and the last one is seventy-four.
All right. Thank you.
From, from the ground, yes. And, and the reason there may be some blocks under some of the sections is, I'll, I'll be blunt. We, we got tired of sweeping stuff away from underneath the fence. There's, you know, may, may, maybe blown leaves or whatever.
I just really need to know the heights. I don't need to know.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, at the front of the driveway, you said you pulled out a, a bravaide, right?
Yes.
So how tall was that bush, that abravaide, from ground to all the way up?
Well, there, there were four of them of varying heights. I, I'd say the, um-
Were they over three feet?
Yes. Absolutely. You know, the, the tallest one might have been, I, I say that they range maybe from about six to eight feet, five to eight feet maybe.
Okay, that's all, that's all, I'm, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I've caught, now I've followed the discussion. I think we've, we've beat this one. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what's in front of us again is a person agreed by the building inspector's decision. So, that's what's before us. You do have options, but, um, it's up to this board to decide. So-
Entertain a motion?
What's that?
You entertain a motion?
Um, if you would like to discuss it first, if you'd like to, somebody wants to throw what they're thinking or anything first, fine. Um, so I, I cut off public discussion.
Is there any more comment about the abravaides?
No, I, I've cut off the discussion. We really have to cut it off. I, I gave you plenty of time. I, the abravaides really aren't, at this point, in my mind-
Right.
Part of our discussion, we're dealing with the fence.
Well, the long point I want to make is the abravaides were thin and you could see through them. Now this is solid fence.
I understand. Yeah. Um, okay, so anyway, like I say, he determined that the twenty feet, he, he addressed two sections. Am I correct?
Yes.
So he addressed the first two sections. One of them slopes down.
Right.
So, um, and I would almost think, I don't know if you could pull out one section, move that one slope-down section back or not.
That one section, you know, from what I looked at and didn't measure, it looks like it starts about four feet and goes up to the-
I think it's-
Six or something.
Based on what they've, it submitted, it was, it, uh, first section slopes from four to six.
Four to six, right.
Four to six.
Yeah, so in which, um-
Which still would be in violation.
It's in violation completely.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
So, and, and the point is that there was no old fence there, which is what I believe he based his decision on. The abravaides that they took down are really-
Right.
They're relevant, but they're not.
Right. Agreed.
So-
So it's starting from new and as if they have to go before any, and even though they may have gone before the, um, conservation in Hickory Hills, they address things on the lakeside. They don't address anything on the roadside.
They don't address, no. No, this is, this is strictly a zoning issue. This is, this is in our statute. This is in chapter forty. This is in our statute.
Right.
So this is, this is a zoning issue. That's before us and that's why they, and that's why they have to, you know, that's why they're agreed by the building commissioner. So, uh, unless anyone else has any comment, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Could I just make one comment, please?
Yes.
Um, so when I read the bylaw, it's very short and pretty to the point. I agree with the building commissioner's letter. And then in exhibit B, the first sentence is, "Not knowing the twenty-foot regulation, we did not think there would be a problem, um, because we regulars saw these precedents during morning-evening walks." So it's kind of admitting that you didn't follow the bylaw. And having been in construction most of my life, that usually doesn't work in my experiences. I've never said that to anyone and I didn't think I could get away with it. So I, I kind of feel like the commissioner is right, and then it says that they acknowledge that. So I have a hard time going against him.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
When I was thinking about all this and everything else related to it and looking at it, and the area around there, I hadn't realized what your history that you would bring up about the situation of everything around there. And I was wondering about the history of when some of these bylaws were added to our, um, zoning. And it'd be nice, maybe in the future, if Lisa could make a note that, uh, to put in, revised as of a certain date. And that might help make things like this a little easier in the future.
Right, so zoning came in in the sixties, so it's revised.
Yes.
Sometimes every year.
Yeah. I was just gonna say that. They, they, they make revisions. The state makes revisions. Towns make revisions. There's so many-
Layers.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, in front-of-town meeting every year, there's something to do with, with changes to planning, zoning, all that stuff, over and over. So things change through the years. Sometimes it's just worrying. But it would be, you know, difficult to say, well, that fence was built in nineteen-seventy-two and this law came in nineteen-seventy-three.
Right.
You know, very difficult to figure.
And I, I, I'm not sure how much that would retain here, because this, this, we don't have a pre-existing. I understand what you're saying. So I, I feel, I, Mr. Chair, I might, just as a quick comment, comment, I do, I feel, terrible for the applicant, because I would look at this as the company that they hired to do the fence should have known the Lunenburg laws and helped, helped them navigate through it. However, I do believe that the law is pretty specific here. Um, it's not, and, and that's, and that fact that-
Public discussion.
And so that, you know, it's pretty specific there, and that's the unfortunate thing for me, is that I feel like they, you know, I would hope that the company that they used would take into effect that they should have been able to he- help them through this process. However, I do believe, you know, in my opinion, that the, that the, uh, building commissioner had no choice in this matter.
With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I, I, I make a motion that we, um, unfortunately, that we side with the, um, with the building commissioner.
Uphold the decision.
Uphold the building commissioner's, yes.
All second.
Second. Second. Okay, with that, I will ask for a vote.
Aye.
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 An aye. Okay, with that, um, we did make a decision. The, uh, first twenty feet are gonna have to come down to the, the three-foot.
The first, the first sixteen, uh, fourteen feet, first fourteen feet. The first twenty feet within the, within the right of, with the, within the street, which is first two panels.
Yep.
Right. And the only thing I will tell you is that there is, as I had stated earlier, Lisa will do the decision. So I make sure I get it right.
The fence within twenty horizontal feet of public street must be reduced in height to thirty-six to meet the length of the zoning bylaw.
Right. Okay. So thirty-six inches is correct. Okay, and the only, the only thing I will say is, um, a copy of the board's decision shall be filed within, with the town clerk within fourteen days. And any party agreed by the our board's decision may appeal to Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. And with that, uh, we thank you for coming, and the decision has been made.
So I work with the building inspector to, uh, to, for conformance then?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, you can just talk to him. And, uh, you know, I'm sure you can use that one section you, you've got going, but you're gonna have to change it. So I'll work with him. He'll, he'll work with you to tell you what you, what you have to do. And with that, we thank you for coming, and, uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
There's nothing new before, so, so move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 With that, this hearing-